...
Misses, what's the number? Missing Morton? All right, this is the second one now come, will now come to order, Mrs. Centerwood. Call roll please. Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mrs. Swanson?
Here.
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Mrs. Tockill is not here yet, we expect her to arrive. Mrs. Utehar?
Here.
Ms. Rebaughley, that is in the front room?
Here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, we'll now have communication with Monroe School, Mr. Park.
Good evening. I would like to welcome you to James Howard Monroe Middle School. I would also like to welcome our guests along with Dr. Harris' leadership team and our Board of Education to Monroe for this evening's orgy meeting. We're especially excited about the summer projects that will be happening here at Monroe. Monroe's extreme makeover, as I like to call it, will be a welcome refresh to our building. I want to thank our PTA for providing refreshments for this evening, also thank our orchestra and band students or and teachers for providing music as you enter the building. There's so much to be proud of here at Monroe, and we only have a short time to brag about all the good things that are happening. We continue to be thankful for our namesake Medal of Honor recipient, James Howard Monroe, and we celebrate the core values of courage, citizenship, commitment, integrity, sacrifice, and patriotism. This year at our Veterans Day Assembly, we had a gentleman who actually served with James Howard Monroe, and he was able to speak to our students about Jimmy, as he called him, and we were able to hear a real personal tale of our namesake compared to just seeing all the pictures and hearing the heroic things that he did, but to hear him as a person was amazing, and our 800 students, we could hear a boom drop. He was very special for us all. At this point, I'd like to introduce my assistant principal, Mrs. Susan Ballis, she's going to talk a little bit about what we're going to do for Memorial Day.
Thank you, Brian. I don't talk quite as fast as Brian, but I have been told I'm on the clock, so I just wanted to share with you what we're going to do for Memorial Day. We are going to have the students come around the play and hear the taps, and then we're going to take a reading, this is going to be our new tradition, a selected group of students, Mr. Ruff and myself will go over to the cemetery and lay the wreath at Jimmy's grave, and the kids will also be there to play the taps for that, and we're going to videotape that, and then at the end of the day, we're going to run that to all the classrooms to end the day in a significant way to honor James Howard Monroe. Thank you.
Thanks, Suez. Tonight, we're going to focus on an area of technology. We feel there are two examples in which technology is used to help our students and that are worthy of recognition. The first is a presentation from our teachers involved in the Syracuse program and Special Education Director, Susan Waters. Here.
Good evening. My name's Susan Waters, and I am the Director of Special Ed for the secondary programs. Very sharply, you'll have the opportunity to see some of the students utilizing technology in a traditional classroom environment, but before you do that, we would like to introduce you to one of our programs at Monroe that uses technology in different ways in order to increase accessibility. In our school district, we have 14 Syracuse classrooms that serve the needs of our students with moderate to severe disabilities from elementary school all the way through the transition program for our students 18 to 22 years old. Currently, we have 85 students District 1 in these classes. Unlike a traditional class schedule, our students' academic and functional needs are embedded into four domains throughout the day: vocational, regressive, domestic, and community. As you can see, our classrooms have a unique design. In order to best meet the diverse needs of our students, we have room that allows us to provide instructional, vocational, therapy, and personal care space we need to meet the needs of our students. By the way, last summer, we were allowed to have the space reconfigured and remodeled, so we would like to thank you again, Board of Education of District 200, for supporting that remodeling project. Many of our students have barriers, and those barriers prevent them from accessing the world around them in the typical way you and I access our environment. Some of our students are nonverbal and require communication devices. Our specialists who work with these students are constantly searching for ways in which to help them communicate their needs, wants, and feelings to others. We would like to briefly highlight some of our students' unique needs and introduce you to some of the ways in which we have used technology to break down the barriers for each of them. Please welcome some of our dedicated professionals that work with our students.
Hi, my name's Kristy Saracuski, and I'm one of the Syracuse program teachers here at Monroe. Through the technology of the AAC device, Sarah and many of her peers are able to communicate their wants and needs and actively participate in the educational environment.
Hello, my name is John Henderson, and I'm one of the social workers here at Monroe. Using a computer program called Clicker 5, Arthur is shown here independently accessing books and actively participating in a favorite break/leisure activity.
Hi, my name's Nicole Sauer, I'm a physical therapist here at Monroe. This is Emma using the Smartboard where students can interact with their lessons, including calendar, attendance, counting, et cetera, with use of the touch screen. One of Emma's physical therapy goals is to walk short distances within her classroom, and the Smartboard allows Emma the opportunity to combine her academic goals, her mobility goals, and her social goals all within this one activity.
Hi, I'm Michelle Haley, and I'm a behavioral therapist here. Next, we're going to meet Olivia. Olivia invites her lunch in the cafeteria here every day, but she needs to puree it in order to eat it, and she does this through the use of a switch which controls the blender. Now, this environmental switch adapter allows all of our students to control various appliances in the environment.
Hi, my name's Molly Brashado, I'm a speech pathologist at Monroe, and this is Peter. Peter's journey to using technology to communicate has been incredible. He showed us how capable he was with using a class communication notebook as a sixth grader when he came to Monroe. At that time, he realized due to limitations physically, no voice and no access meant no independence for him. Our goal is to move Peter to a device so we can break the communication barrier and provide him with the opportunity to communicate independently. Peter is currently an eighth grader, and just a few short months ago, with the help and dedication of several District 200 specialists along the way, Peter began using his new device. It has been beautiful to witness this because technology has truly been the key to unlocking his thoughts, his feelings, and even his humor. The first time his parents came to school to see him use this new technology, he blew all of us away because the very first thing that he said to them was unpracticed and spontaneous. It was "I love you." Technology is powerful, and in Peter's case, life-changing. As you watch a brief video clip of Peter using his device to tell you he feels happy, please note that this is based on a scanning system. You'll hear him scan choices given in a woman's voice by using a switch with his hand, and when he selects what he wants to say with the switch at his head, you'll hear a man's voice to simulate his own.
Comments. I want to do something. Let's go. I feel.
I feel.
I like, I don't like, I be, find possible. Positive emotions, negative emotion. Positive emotions.
Positive emotions.
Happy, excited, funny, makes me laugh. Happy.
Happy.
Our goal is always to increase accessibility and communication for all of our students. There's so much more to see and learn than in the few minutes we have tonight, so if any of you would like more information, we'd be happy to speak with you in a few more times, and we hope to see you in our classrooms soon. Thank you for your attention today.
The second thing we'd like to do tonight is show you a sixth grade language arts classroom. We have some of our students in the back here, and this is a sixth grade language arts pilot that is piloting Chromebooks. Students in Mrs. Prior's class have been using 32 Chromebooks all year long. We knew that giving students opportunity to work with these devices on a regular basis would give students opportunities to practice 21st century skills, but what students and teachers have been doing with these devices has been incredible. We'd like to see a very quick glimpse of what our students are actually able to do in the classroom, and again, just like Mrs. Waters says, if you would ever like to come back and sit in class for a while and see like a whole class, we would love to have you, because it's pretty powerful. So, I know this isn't normal, but if you guys want to come back here, and we have some of our students, and she's just going to do eight minutes or so, a couple different things to show you what kind of they can do. If you want to trade with some, we actually have some.
Well, it's kind of unique if you aren't familiar with the device. It's just a web browser, so there's no local storage, very, very light. They cost, these cost about $250 apiece, so for a full class set. Please feel free to open them up, it takes about eight seconds. Go ahead, guys. We are in the middle of research projects right now, so some of us may recreate some research, so we're going to just kind of make that happen. But the students log into a Google account. Is that right? Okay. Students log into a Google account, they each have their own user ID that's under School District 200, so anything that they share among themselves, I have them share with me, and so they're going to log in. And then go ahead and open your document that you'd like to work on. Some of them will be on a website called Storyjumper. We've done research, and they're writing their own nonfiction books, and they'll put it in a digital format on Storyjumper. You can see here some of my students who are at home, I did not pay them, but they were working at home on their own. It wasn't homework, they just are really into this project, so a number of them, I can see that this, when I log into mine, I can see the current activity, the students who have recently accessed their document, and then I can go into those individual documents and see what they've moved on there. So as these students log into documents, then they'll pop up here, they'll start to make edits. If you want to open a tab, and does somebody want to go to the library side? Maybe, okay, great, thanks, guys. And feel free to come around, ask them questions, we thought we'd just set up kind of a classroom situation and make some things happen then. We have access to the library, databases, and some students can get on there. There are two different views, and I'll, there are two different views in Google Docs, so you'll be able to see the content this way, it's kind of a little thumbnail, as well as a list, you see why students log in. All right, anybody have a document up? Got a busy change in there, a couple of others. Okay, go up here, yes. One or two people had a, I think she had a similar method. Add another one, you know. There we go. So Bella's accessing hers, so I'm able to take a look, and if I wanted to go into her document, okay. So if I go into Bella's document, I'm able to read what she's doing, I can make comments to her, this is actually one from before when I was looking, I'm able to say "Looking good," or "Please add this," or "Go back and check that," so we're able to communicate within the document. Comments? Who else has Storiesjumper going? You guys have Storiesjumper? All right, the next thing I'm going to have to do, they don't know this, so this is going to be really authentically just, I'm going to share a document with you guys. So I'm just splitting into two groups, I'm going to have you three be one group. I'm going to go to my Google Drive, and there's, I created this document, it's a debate about whether everybody should get a trophy. So I'm going to have you read this document, and then I'm going to have you comment on it. So I'm going to share this one with, I'm going to put Jamie, Jamie, and Katie. And have you, excuse me. And then the other document I'm going to share with my other group, so you guys can go ahead and go to your drive and access that. Now, I have group two, be you guys. Daniel, hey, how are you? Good to see you. Wait, just jump in.
What's great about this too is there's really no saving, so as the kids are jumping from document to document, you know, so they don't have to go to file and save like you do with Word documents, it automatically saves every few seconds, so they can bounce from tab to tab, they can bounce from document to document and not have to worry about saving and making sure that they lose it, because once it's on there, it's on there, and as she saves it, it's also on hers, so if the kid somehow deleted, she can just share it again with them and they have it.
All right. I'm going to give you guys a little bit, I'll add them up. All right, so they're going to read this document, and then they're going to make comments as they read it, so if you have feedback that you wanted, a question, what's neat about Google Docs is if there are words that the students don't understand, I put the actual document first, copy of this, and then down at the bottom, they can actually highlight and use words if they don't understand what a word means, then they can double click.
Lee showed them how you know that they're on the document, that was.
Oh, sure, right up here in the.
You saw those just pop up, that's how you know.
So I know that's Daniel, I can hover on these, that's Jared, Katie's in there. So can somebody guys make a comment, please? You can make it, make your.
So what's great about this is Daniel, Jamie, and Katie can be at home at seven o'clock at night, and they can make these comments with each other, and that's what we're finding is so powerful, as you saw at the beginning, Lee, you know, has students already on these documents, but if you have a group of students that were working on something, they could be working on this at any time, and even if one of them is at soccer practice and makes a few comments and then goes, the next one can come home and see those comments and go, oh, I see what you're saying, make those comments go where they need to go, and so it continues that learning, so when they come back to class the next day, they've had this conversation about whatever they've been talking about, and that's what we're seeing is very, very powerful.
The other thing that makes it really accessible, can kind of jump a little bit out the back of the other accessibility issues, is that we have similar, not quite as extreme access issues, but we still have students who read at all different levels in our classroom, obviously, so this makes it really accessible, if they have that, they can privately on their own look up a word, if they don't understand what this is, they can double click on it, and then research medals or define medals over on the side, and that'll pop right up within the, within the Google Doc, which makes it great for the kids. Read a little bit, see if you guys can make a comment or two on that. So click, click somewhere in the document, like let's say you don't know what this word means, you go up there and make a comment, and say, who knows what this means? Anybody want to respond? Did we go to privacy? And this is the other group, so I have Bella and Katie, and Jamie, and then over here, there we go. That's, you know, content, content here.
Katie's following privacy. So we talked a lot about performance assessment, so as Mrs. Prior's typing, if you agree the trophies shouldn't be for everybody, now the kids can actually answer those, and we have instant feedback, and then we know and we can say, it's really great.
Maybe you'll be proud. I told you, you're so, so.
All right, any questions, real quick?
And that's just one aspect of Google, Google has blogs and websites, and we're just primarily using Google Drive, so you can make spreadsheets and documents, that's where our emphasis is, but the Chromebooks have been a huge access point for us. And they're good guys.
Well, again, thank you for coming, thank you to our Syracuse program, thank you to Mrs. Prior and the students for presenting. Like I said, please feel free to come back and see either program, both programs, we would love to have you. There's lots of other things that we are super proud of at Monroe, but obviously, the time is short, we wanted to show you a couple of technology related things. But thank you very much, I know you, we'll see you in a, we'll meet sooner and engage sooner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Park, and staff, I know you are very busy this time of year, you're welcome to stay and listen to us go through our fourth agenda items, or so, but you are also welcome to leave, if you would like, we will deliver more to available, and thank you for all you do for students here at Monroe, we appreciate your great, great time. Okay, modifications to the agenda? Already modifications, board members, wish to. And Dr. Harris, will you take us into recognitions and achievements, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, board members and community, we are delighted this evening to have three different groups of recognitions and achievements this evening, and I'm assuming that's why we have a lot of audience here tonight. First, I would like to start with the Wheatmoreville South Dance Team, and I know they're here, I seen them back there. I'd like to introduce Coach Tiffany Marcioni, and Coach Marcioni, if you could just spend a few minutes talking about your team's accomplishment in particular with the state championship award and the hard work they put in. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. As they pile in. One thing unique about the dance team that a lot of people don't know, that it's a long road to state. We actually start practicing in June, and we start working on technical elements and start learning routines that may be in our football routines, and we may learn sidelines, so we start that in June, and then we get a little break in July. Then we come back in August with the fall sports, and we support our Tiger football team, as well as perform at other events such as Tiger soccer games, and then when we transition to winter, it begins our competitive season as well as our basketball team, and we perform our competition routines at our Tiger basketball games. We compete November, December, January, February, and finally, our state was held the first weekend in March. And this year, we had two routines that we brought to state, our open dance, we received third place, and then our pond routine, which was a shopping theme, so if you see their shirts, they say shopaholics, and that's probably true as well, but our routine was a pond routine with a shopping theme, so we are super pumped to add two trophies to our trophy case. This is our second state championship and our fifth state trophy, so I'm super proud as a coach. I absolutely love spending time with these girls and appreciate the hard work that they put in and the support from their families and our school, our administrators, so I'm just fortunate to have all of them be a part of my life, so. So let me just introduce the girls that are here. Our state team, we have 17 girls on the team, Diana Cordopasi, Alyssa Jerkis, Gianna Gallado, Gallado, Serquiz, Olivia Jerkis, Maddy Kreschmer, Allison Shire, Ally Brand, Rachel Linquist, Sarah Graves, Bridget Kelly, Abby Moore, Zerri Wells. So, thank you so much for inviting us, and we're very proud of our.
And congratulations on your accomplishment and hard work you're doing, recognizing us.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
We also have another state champion here this evening, Mary Horr is here from Wheatmore High School, and board members, you might remember, our last committee at the home meeting at TCD, Mary was there and helped cook us dinner as part of the tour of the facility there, and Mary is a junior at Wheatmore High School and just competed in TCD's third straight culinary poststart state championship. The team competed February 8th at the 13th Annual Illinois Pro Start Student Invitational for High School Culinarians hosted by the Illinois Restaurant Association at Kendall College in Chicago. Mary was a major player in the first place team. As state champ, the TCD team had the honor of competing as Team Illinois in the culinary competition at the National Pro Start Invitational on May 5th, or I'm sorry, 3rd through the 5th, in Minneapolis, where they finished 10th out of 48 teams. So, welcome, Mary, congratulations, and good to see you again.
Thank you.
Anything I missed there?
A little bit.
I'm sure there was.
There's a lot there, too. I just want to start out, this is my friend Sarah, she goes to Wheatmoreville South. We studied actually with 10 or 12 people, and after her teams or the members were picked, everybody dropped out except for Sarah, she actually helped pull everything together, and I don't think we really would have been or gotten where we were without her, so I just wanted to bring her along for a little recognition. Thank you, guys. I competed at state, but after state, I dropped out, became an alternate, and Jake Spellmark took over, he goes to Montana Valley. After, arduous. After our Jewish practices, practiced fifteen first, fifteen run-throughs and seventeen for nationals, we got exactly where we needed to be and I am so proud of everybody that competed. It was probably this past weekend, the nationals competition was probably one of the greatest experiences of my life, I met a lot of amazing professionals in the field and I just learned so much, it was just a phenomenal experience. So I actually just want to thank you guys as well because it wouldn't be possible for me to have this opportunity to be at work with you guys, just wanted to say thank you.
Well, we just recognized two groups of students here this evening and now we have the opportunity to recognize some special staff in our district, and I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome the New 200 Foundation this evening, Joe Ruth, Patrick Kelly and Emma Paulson. The New 200 Foundation is a nonprofit dedicated to funding new programs and rewarding initiative on hardened teachers and students. It's operated by a volunteer group of parents in the community. The New 200 mission statement enhances school experience in District 200 students. I'm going to turn over to Mr. Joe Ruth at this time and let him explain our award winners this evening and the categories in which they are representing.
Dr. Harris, members of the board, thank you for having us here. To recognize a few, just a few of the many outstanding teachers that we have in this district. What I will do is, we have three selections, we have one elementary school teacher, one middle school teacher, one high school teacher. So I would like to recognize first, Ms. Mary Ann Vintzer, and she was nominated by Bryn Wolf, Les Orlov. I would like to read a few of the comments that came in her nomination. Sufficiently embarrassing. Ms. Vintzer is an ambassador for fitness and education. She inspires students to achieve in ways that make learning fun. As they compete, complete their big mile run, they are celebrated by cheering parents and staff. Regardless of their ability, the aim is to do better. She also inspires families, leading one parent to do something they never thought they had the ability to do. And that's important, inspiring families as well as students. She leads families into their students' success by having the greatest show on earth circus event after teaching gymnastics and the really big show dance event after required dance instruction. This is capped by having parents see their children and teachers dance as one group. She set up a program in gym called Athletics to help students learn and excel in math skills. She sponsors and participates in after-school activities and out-campus activities. Every spring, she gives disadvantaged children a refurbished bike, helm and locker. She makes a difference every day of every year in the lives of her students. Ms. Vintzer, would you please come out here?
As Ms. Vintzer is walking around here, I have to admit, when we were over at Lowell a couple of years ago, she got me to do the fun dancing, and board members remember, and being an active participant in the board meeting, so congratulations.
Our middle school teacher is Ms. Caitlin Lewis. She was nominated by Kathy Douglas. Ms. Lewis is an inspiring, accessible teacher who motivates her students to achieve and feel capable and competent. She keeps reminding them that you can do it, it's easy for you. She keeps her students on track, involved, and gives them the ambition to go a little bit further than they thought they could. She helps students with personal and outside issues, she offers tips and strategies for improving social and academic skills. She is a person students and parents can rely on. And last, but certainly not least, we have Betty Basista Robinson from Wheat North High School. She was nominated by Gianna Bog, Nikki Pesabato and Jeffrey Dickinson. And I should mention, Ms. Bog is now a teacher. She did the unusual thing of nominating a former teacher. Ms. Basista is one of the most inspirational teachers I have ever met. She is the reason that I became a Spanish teacher. She believes every student is capable and reminds you every day of your capabilities. She makes sure that every student is giving their full effort to reach their highest potential at all times. She emphasizes a growth mindset, which she means not perfect ability, but perfect effort. She shares her own life stories so the students can learn from her and she provides authentic materials that are unrelatable, important topics. She makes sure students learn not only vocabulary and grammatical techniques, but comprehensive cultural and social topics. She is always willing to meet students where they are and help them one-on-one. She started an after-school program teaching elementary school students. She is a most passionate teacher and invests herself so heavily in her students that their success becomes her success.
I'd like to thank the New 200 Foundation for awarding our staff these excellent awards and we appreciate your support and recognizing very special people.
Now to public comments on agenda items, I've written public comments, there are no one signed up. Okay, so now the superintendent report.
Thank you, Mrs. Etta Harre and board members. Several items this evening that I'd like to update you on. First one is some news from the federal level, state level, is, I'm sure you're aware, you've seen that the state of Illinois received the NCLB waiver finally, long awaited. What does that mean for District 200? It means that we will no longer have failing schools, which was the penalty, if you remember, for the year after the year of not meeting the criteria that was set out in the No Child Left Behind law. However, it does not mean that accountability ends, it just means that the metrics and the way that we are going to evaluate our schools and their performance is going to change, quite frankly, in a much better way. It's going to measure growth, it's going to measure student growth, meeting students where they're at and after eight or nine months of instruction, where they're at. So with this waiver, what does it really mean as far as some of our operations? We no longer require to provide choice in those failing schools that we've talked about here at the board table. And so therefore, we will be sending out a letter to the parents that are in that situation. What it really boils down to from that is we will require to provide transportation for that choice, we are no longer required to do that. We still will work with our students and our parents and through our facilitation transfer process and allow for that if space permitted and it is appropriate, as we do with all of our schools. But transportation will no longer be part of that, which was a significant amount of our title dollars spending on a bus instead of on instruction for students, so we are very happy to have that mandate removed from us with this waiver. Also, SES support was another one that we had to provide for our students and some of those schools have been identified of multiple years of not meeting those expectations where we had to hire outside private companies to come in and work with our kids, and again, we would prefer to work with our own staff and provide the supports if we know benefit students on a daily basis. So that's really what it boils down to in that waiver. I will be forwarding a copy of the letter so you're familiar with it in case you're being questioned, we will be sending that out at the end of the week, or within a week, okay, in a week, looking over at the bank, making sure it's in there, right? Along that same line at the state level, the PARC assessments, I had commented at the last meeting about kind of the status of that. Well, there's been a lot of activity and good activity from my perspective with where that's at. In fact, I was on the phone today with a representative, she called me and there was some legislation was being considered in one commission that's on, and I talked with her about that and what their, I don't know if the actions have slowed you down in that and was not able to follow up on it, however, as you know, we will be required to implement the PARC assessment in lieu of the ISAD grade 3-3 next year, which is fine, it's a good change. We've got some challenges with the implementation with the online portion, but you know, it certainly would be a more valuable assessment than the ISAD has been for several years. The issue's at the high school level, if you recall, where there was a significant amount of testing that we were concerned about, especially in the junior year. My understanding is, based on that waiver that I just told you about, to get that waiver, one component of it was you have to have longitudinal assessment and accountability. So we still have to assess one grade level based on that waiver at the high school level. Now, there's still in discussions whether it would be the freshman year or the sophomore year. They are in agreement that the ACT should stay on as the assessment for the juniors. So, at least for the time being. So, I believe some of the work that I was directly involved in, as well as my colleagues in other districts, that we, our legislators are listening, staff in Springfield and the state board of education is also listening, and you know, we are having an impact in that regard. So, feel pretty good about that right now, we'll wait and see until it becomes final, but that's what I would anticipate, so we do, we think the PARC assessment, and we're fine with that, and it would give us an opportunity to work through those issues at the high school level. One of the key factors in this whole thing was colleges testified, the colleges said, we're not going to count this PARC assessment as a college interest thing, we don't know enough about it. Doesn't mean we won't consider it and look at it for a year or two and determine if it's something we'll consider, but when the college admission office has gotten involved, which we do, but it took a while for that to happen, now they're paying attention when it doesn't impact, you know, many, many students across the state as well as the district. So, that's the update on the PARC assessment front. I would like to comment briefly about the state budget, there was a lot of debate this afternoon in regard to state budget, and my understanding is, at least, there has not been a vote, although I might anticipate that here in the next couple of days, there is, I think that's good news that we're hearing, that there was a recommendation in the governor's budget to have a 90% of the general state aid being funded, now there is a connection with the income tax staying in place, so I have a feeling there'll be two votes, there'll be an income tax vote and there'll be a state funding and budget vote. But from a school standpoint, certainly, that will impact our budget in a positive way as we move forward, and we will be bringing those budget numbers in the June meeting and talk a little bit, give an update on where we're at before we post the budget here for this coming year. I also, at this time, would like to introduce Liz Corey, who's here this evening, as an update, as we have completed our fifth session of the Engage 200 conversations with our community, Liz.
Did anything you ever mind, I can't. I want to be at middle school again. I loved that presentation, that was great. Thanks again for the opportunity to participate in the meaningful exercise of Engage 200. I've loved every minute of it, it's been great to watch the community and their response and hear the feedback in the community, people talking. So as Dr. Harris mentioned, we've completed our community engagement session number five, which was finance, and we had a really engaged group of community members that turned out for the presentation by Assistant Superintendent Bill Harley and Mike Francis of PMA. It was great, I have a whole new appreciation of the tough financial pressures that you face as a board. I know it was a very finance one-on-one from a school district standpoint, you guys know way more than we do, but just from being a community member and looking at the pressures that you face from the federal, state, the finances and how they close this, the district, I am so impressed with what a great job you are doing and will do in the future, I hope with our feedback. We received great media coverage, which will help us reach the people that weren't able to join us in one of the five previous sessions. In fact, we've scheduled to have a few members of our committee appear at the number one municipal public access show, Chat with the Mayor, which will be on May 21st, so if you want to DVR that. At CES five, participants were given two tasks, and those are what we break into the work groups to work on. And number one was, what else? And we deliberately left that open-ended because we really wanted to see what the community felt about the financial presentation and the questions that they had. And I mean the questions, when you look at the verbatim document, they were all over the place, and you couldn't even begun to touch on all those questions, we really should have had maybe an hour-long question and answer session afterwards to answer those questions because I think that Bill could have very easily answered the questions for the community, but it was just very diverse. So I thought that was really good and the facilitating team's going to be looking and delving deeper into those questions. And then task number two was the financial considerations for the future, because there's really only two ways to solve the problems or the predicaments that we all face. If the board is required to reduce the expenditures, what reductions should they consider? Or, on the other hand, if the board needs to consider additional revenues, what approaches should be chosen? And so the verbatim document is, or really shortly available, online at the district website, so if the community wants to delve further into it, you can click on the Engage 200 logo and find more information. Now going forward, we have a subcommittee of the facilitating team that's going to be working on a draft presentation that will form the presentation for CES number six, and that will be held Wednesday, June 18th at 7:00, right here at Narominal School. With the final community input from Community Engagement Six, we will form a draft presentation to present to the board for future consideration for your long-range planning, so I hope that that will be very helpful and meaningful to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Liz, and thank you to yourself as well as Scott Brown for, you know, your leadership efforts with our teams, thank you very much, appreciate it. One other reminder for the board and for the community, our graduation coming up on May 24th with Wheat North in the morning and Wheat North South in the afternoon, we will be back at College Page this year. And board members, you should have information in your green folders here this evening, so make sure you take that, pay attention to it, okay? You will get reminders as well, but there is some parting information and so on. It's always a fun time of year with graduation at both of our high schools. Finally, one other document I want to bring your attention to in the green folders is a 2014 project summary for the summer work that we're doing, and actually, the majority of our items here this evening on action deal with this, and I'm going to turn over to Mr. Harley briefly and let him walk through that document with the detail about the projects that you will be taking action on this evening. Yeah.
Are there any conditions on that waiver? I mean, can they revoke it, is there a term on it, or is it just now it's law or whatever, maybe?
You mean the NCLB?
Yeah.
Yeah, there are some terms and conditions. One of them is you have to implement the teacher evaluation. One of them is you have to implement the teacher evaluation instrument. You have to have the assessment components. So what the feds can do is they can say, well, if you don't state, if you don't do these things, then we're going to pull it back and you're still going to lose your, it all boils down to money and the grants and the title grants. And that's what the fed is, you know, that's their, that's exactly right. So that is, that's it. There is a lot of criteria, but that's a couple of things. Good question.
One other item, the state funding. You mentioned that the plan and passing or not passing different things would be 90%. What do we have this year, like percentage?
Eighty, eighty-nine? Eighty-nine percent. Yes. Trying to remember that numbers go all over the place and it's been different every year and we've used different for our projections. So yeah, ninety's in the good spot for us, especially in our plan. Okay. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Farley and let him walk through briefly the summer sheets as we'll be working through these items through the season. Mr. Farley.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I'm going to talk in some detail about items nine through sixteen on the consent agenda first. As Dr. Harris indicated, they're in your packet. We have summary sheets of the projects that are going on this summer. Everybody's probably familiar with this document, which is performance contracting work. And that's going to be presented a little bit later. So I'm going to leave that for the following presentation. But I wanted to talk about consent agenda items first, the items nine through sixteen. Both of these items, boards are aware, are on the, on the bucket for the summer. Want to focus, item nine is the approval of the library furniture at Wheat North High School. Angela Bedoni's the LLC director of Wheat North. She's tired of seeing me up there at north in the library. But she's excited about the library and the changes that we've made in there as far as the furniture goes. It's not going to look quite as much like a 1980s library anymore. It's going to be modernized and we obviously took some time with the benefit of insurance proceeds to pay for the new furniture that's going to be ordered for the LLC. And that's on the agenda tonight. So I just wanted to touch on that briefly. And Angela's here, if you have any questions specific to the furniture. Items ten through twelve, Rob Squirrel is here from the Wheat Park District, Great Partners, as you all know, with our park districts, especially Wheat Park District. And they're installing a synthetic field behind the school. It is on our property. So that does require that we get a permit from the ROE Regional Office of Education, which we're working with Rob and the park district down. We also have to get stormwater easement from the city of Wheat, which Rob and his staff are working with the city of Wheat on. And then finally, through discussions with the city of Wheat, the park district has determined the best way to access the property is over on the west side of Monroe Middle School and that, that access. So they're going to be doing that as well. So there's also a temporary construction easement agreement that we have with the boards, obviously well aware. We have an intergovernmental agreement and work very well with the Wheat Park District and are excited about this project. It'll hopefully serve the students of the school district and the park district as well, very well. And we're excited to have that one done. Items thirteen through sixteen are all items that you can find on this sheet. This is the summary sheet that Mr. Setti and I have been working on from like an architect's relative to the projects that are occurring this summer. It started out by saying that we're very excited that the numbers came in very well, the bidding process went very well. We're well under where we thought we'd be. We also were able to include some alternates to fix some tile in some, in the school, Monroe Middle School out in the Commons area, as well as Edison Middle School, where the tiles falling pretty bad in cafeteria and common access space outside of there. We were able to get rid of the rest of carpet at Wheat North Real South, which was also on there as well. So those were all bid alternatives that we were able to do. You may wonder what the LRC pit infill is. If you wander one section over, in true spirit of the sixties, the school has a sunken pit area that we actually used to have in the Commons that was built in back when construction was done. But it's the library portion, a lot of the books and things are down in a lower level pit, which is not ADA accessible. It does have a ramp or a lift, excuse me, that is in there now that has been tagged out because it needs to be replaced. It's about $20,000 to replace. So while we were looking at this project, we thought maybe that's a good time to try and infill that and get that up to take it a little bit more ADA-friendly, as it were. So we are looking at doing that as well, getting some pricing to get that filled in and tiling right over the top and bringing it up to great. Also, in these numbers are the Jefferson fire alarm system, which will be charged as the operations and maintenance fund, but it is included in this work as well. So when you take a look at how the overall projects came in for this work, along with the projects that are in the performance contracting work were under our budget from the monocoats that were collected. I'm not going to steal performance services, but I'll look at the, some of the rebates and incentives that are out there. I'll let them talk a little bit about that more. We're very excited with how things are coming in and just want to answer any questions in case for consent agenda, but bids came in very well.
Thank you. Summary, as you can see on the project summary sheet here, there were 1.5 million, you know, too good. So which is, you know, and that's built in with all the contingencies and so on. So that's incorporated in consent agenda as well as the, some of the action items. So the action items, we have one in particular we're going to have a presentation. If you have questions about that particular one, we can talk about it at that time.
I just have one question on this in terms of the columns for allowance and contingency. Is that two separate numbers, correct, holding our contingency allowances? We have 142,500 in the bids and in addition to that, we have a whole, it's hard to talk behind the lines. That's correct. The allowance numbers are in the bid price. So the bids you're awarding do include the allowance amount, the contingency is money we're holding to the side above and beyond. You know, for most of the projects, I'm not very worried about contingency. The one which I did mention at the last board meeting, I was concerned about the bids themselves, is pay. Anytime you start digging, you don't know what you're going to find. There's tighter restrictions now with suitable soil or constitute suitable soils. We'll try and leave as much on property as possible, but there's new testing and new dumping requirements. So given the nature of where Johnson's located, I'm a little concerned about the subsurface there. We are reducing the size of that area, but so we are carrying contingency money a little bit more for the paving projects. Those are the ones that are most concerned us.
Could you explain the columns? Just that we have a bid price, allowance price, contingency, et cetera, along with what we're talking about?
Sure. Bid price is what, the bid price and the allowance was the overall amount of the bid that was awarded. So every contractor was asked to include that allowance amount in their bid. So that is in total what you're awarding tonight. Contingency is money we're keeping to the side just in case anything comes up unexpected that we need to address during the process of doing the work. The A and E fees are architect engineer fees. Those are tied into the overall cost, including the contingency. So in other words, if we have to access the contingency, the architect and engineer fees will go up or down depending whether we access it or not because it's based on percentage of the work. And that is the total cost. So that's ostensibly the worst case scenario, assuming our contingencies are appropriate in total.
Okay, just so, did I understand that in the case of the asphalt, which we were very concerned about the pricing on, such as on Jefferson, R. Johnson, bid price is 260, there's allowance in there of 40, contingency of 40, et cetera. And then we had to a total cost of 386, which is still 200 under budget.
Correct.
Okay. And then this total on this page is about, on this sheet is about four, just short of $4 million. And that, this, these pages.
Yes.
So that's all projects with the exception of the performance services.
Correct.
So they're all there. And then we'll talk about performance services separately.
The total is two point, just under 2.5 million total, assuming we use all the contingencies of, you know, the architect fees are all maxed out on the contingency.
Correct. Will we budget it? And then when the bids came in? We're in a good position, very good position.
So just a clarification, if you have any dollars in allowances and contracts that are not spent at the end of the project, we credit them back to us out of those individual contracts and pull back in the contingency. And then one other question, I guess, is whatever money we had left over, I'm sure we'll save, I guess, 1.5 million. But I'm assuming that we would choose to put that in next year's budget to help fund some portion of capital improvements that are still remaining outside of this project?
I'll let Mr. Farley comment on this. I'll make my initial comment. As you, as board members well know, we have a long list of capital needs and, but we would want to make sure that that has a estimate, you know, and we want to make sure that everything comes in as, as costed. So however, that would give us some latitude possibly to consider some other projects or other options with those. Bill, we've got to remember those are one-time dollars, so we have to be cautious on when we choose to do that. Anything else on that, Mr. Farley?
These are segregated site construction monies, correct? So they're not part of the operations or general funds, you know.
We will come to the board in July as we transfer the money out of working cash funds. We have to go through a one advocate to capital project. We'll move that money in July.
Unless there's any other questions, I conclude the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. All right, we have a very lengthy consent agenda, 25 items. I will read them now. Number one, acceptance of a gift to Pleasant Hill Elementary School, acceptance of gifts to Franklin Middle School, approval to post revised policy 7.100, health examinations, and utilization, and exclusion of students for public review and comment. Number four, approval of short-term ELO expanded learning opportunities, intergovernmental agreements, approval to post-high school ELO materials, approval to purchase algebra two textbooks, adoption of the 2013-14 board education meeting calendar, appointment of district representative to the DA OES order directors, approval to purchase library furniture for Wheat North High School from Purchasing Cooperative, approval of ROE building permit for the synthetic field installation at Monroe, at Monroe Middle School by Wheat Park District, approval of a temporary construction access easement agreement to the Wheat Park District at Monroe Synthetic Field, approval to submit stormwater easement for Monroe Synthetic Field, approval of a bid for fire alarm systems and ROE permit applications, approval of a bid for paving work and ROE permit applications, approval of bid for carpet removal, tile replacement, and ROE permit applications, approval of the Wheat North Tracker Service Bin and ROE permit application, approval of the Aramark Food Service Management Contract renewal, approval to declare surplus assets and lease of drivers' education vehicles, approval to dispose of technology surplus assets, approval of first amendment to the Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions for Monarch Landing, approval of resolution appointing treasurer and approving the treasurer's bond, approval of treasurer's bond coverage, approval of bills payable on payroll, approval of the minutes, April 9th, 2014, open, April 23rd, 2014, committee of the whole, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to December 2012, approval of the personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items on the consent agenda, board members, which they have removed? Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move. So I move.
Move by Mr. Roman.
Second.
Second event, Mrs. Cackhill. Is there any discussion?
The, I'm really glad to see that we're doing intergovernmental activity work. It serves the community very positively when various governmental organizations get together. Tonight, we saw a presentation and we had, I think, a pilot program here at Monroe and we were looking at Chromebooks. And we're seeing gifs of numerous items of technology type equipment. How are the units that were here acquired and, you know, give me a little background on that. And then just to clarify, the furniture on the library that is insurance covered 100%? And are we going to have enough cash to make it through May?
There's a lot of questions. See if I can get them all.
Yeah, I can pull one at a time.
Go ahead on the cash one. That's the easy one, I think.
Yes.
Okay, exactly. Just want to make sure that this is for finance concurs with me. The Chromebooks you saw here this evening with Monroe, those were purchased, I believe, by Mr. Buck out of his building budget, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes. And, you know, he has worked with his staff here to, you know, pilot this program, especially with the Google Docs. That was new this year, the whole app, that kind of the software, but also the devices. Again, as we try to move forward and make decisions as a district, we need to take a look at different devices and different instructional techniques. And this is one that we were working on this year here at Monroe. And what's the other question?
Insurance.
Oh, the insurance. Yes, yeah. Paid for by the insurance company.
100%.
Great. Thank you.
One question, Dr. Harris. I saw there was a recent revision to the Aramark item on the consent agenda. What was the revision?
The, the allop harm was, was increasing by the 1.5% as well, consistent with the contract.
I appreciate the response. My email question about the infill here.
One kind of comment, I guess, not so much a question, is when we deal with the construction easement on the west side of Monroe, is there a question, make good documentation of the condition that they serve, they service before work starts and share that with the park district, so you know what it looked like before we started, because it won't look like that after this. Mr. Wilkie is already now there as I've been taking pictures.
And just one question, one comment on the Aramark. The actual prices, lunch prices will stay the same, however, or do they go up?
They will stay the same.
Okay, just putting that out there. And also a shout out to Christine Weiss, who has worked very closely with the wellness committee in terms of helping us understand how all of the new regulations regarding wellness are impacted here. So she's really been an expert on it and has helped us understand that very well. Thank you.
And it reminds me about shout outs. This is at least the second effort that I noticed the gifts from Cadence in the Village of Hinglefield, Pleasant Hill. And also acknowledge the gift to Franklin. Those are so much appreciated by us and without those gifts, we would be difficult to achieve them all and be able to do this.
Okay, are there any other comments? All right, then, Mrs. Senden, will you call her over please?
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gabiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes. Consent agenda passes.
Please move.
Okay, we have several action items last, tonight. And the first is approval of a resolution and final contract for guaranteed energy savings with performance services and to the ROE for construction permits. And I had a motion. So. Move back, Mrs. Swanson?
Second.
Second event, Mr. Roman. Staff?
Yes, obviously, this is a very large contract here and we are going to provide just a brief summary. We've been through this several times now in our facility meetings, committee of the whole, also here with the board. We have, we have some final, you know, details here. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Farley.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. As mentioned, we've been talking about these projects here for a while. They are significant in value. They are being paid for on the monocoats, the VST, we need performance services to give you another update as to where we are. We have updated some and re-prioritized some of the projects to include some additional work. And Mr. Wees is going to go through that. And as I mentioned during my presentation, we do have some updates on the incentives that are being, that are out there that we have access to as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Bob and let him run through it.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate the opportunity to present again. I remember last time I was before you, it was about 10 below zero and there was about a foot of snow. And I was wondering if the next time I was going to be here, if there was still going to be snow on the ground. Luckily, that's changed. I'll try to keep this short. Where do we point this guy at? This part of the... There.
Say it's left. Let me give you a minute.
Thank you. There you go. So I'm going to briefly go through some project highlights for you as well as just sort of remind you of some of the scope of the work and the schedule. Just a reminder, this is going to encompass 17 schools, approximately $7.2 million, I think it's 7194, 773, we're lower than 7.2, and the March 12th board meeting, you approved up to $7.2 million. One of the nice things is we've identified $383,000 worth of rebates on these projects. That's double what we expected once we got into the details of it and really working with the group and engineering, they were able to identify it. Additionally, we changed a few of the energy savings items because there were better energy savings potential in some of the ones at Wheaton Morneville South, for instance, versus some of the elementary schools or their variable frequency drives. So we made some adjustments that significantly increased the utility rebates and, really good. Again, the focus of the project were three things, replace aged systems, which you have numerous amounts of them, improve the learning environment and then the energy savings and incentives. Main things we were working on, HVAC improvements, control upgrades, energy savings, and then we had three roof renovation projects. Project improvements, you've seen these pictures before, but we had a lot of work on the unit ventilators, also that's a picture of the gym air handling unit at Wheaton North, which is starting to fall down, we'll be replacing that, and the control systems, which pretty much throughout your district need to be upgraded, so this is a really good first start up. Regarding the roofs, those three, at Wheaton North, you can see the green area, highlight areas, those are the areas we'll be working on this summer. At Wheaton Morneville South, that's a new item that was added into the list as a priority item versus when I was here March 12th, the small, it takes the auxiliary gym, and then at Emerson, you can see the vast majority of that work. So, summary of scope at Wheaton North, that's a significant portion of this product, $3.2 million, that's those vertical classroom units that we presented before, upgraded a web-based digital control system, I highlighted that because we, during our final walkthrough, they identified valves, control valves, small control valves, that we hadn't identified as being a need 20 years ago when we first looked at it. Since that time, they've had a number of issues with them and so we incorporated that into this project and became a higher priority. And an additional item that we added into this was we added relief fans in the field house. What that's going to do is, those are like big add fans, they're going to draw air into there, so we don't have to try and use the air conditioning to cool that in the summer, which they either didn't do and then it got stifling when we hot by midday, or they did do it and it ran after bill. So this is a compromise solution that we added to that. There again is a picture of those vertical units, which will be going in at the high school section and also at Johnson. At Wheaton Morneville South High School, last time, I think I gave you a discussion of what a Tahiti drive was, but that's those older drives, we'll be replacing those. Additionally, we're implementing some higher rebate energy savings improvements there that we had a, just at the cusp, it was, are we going to do the elementary school rebate ones or those? And when we found what the rebates were, they were significantly better and these have just great paybacks on them. So we went with those and that was a domestic hot water heater that didn't make the initial cut on March 12th and it did now we put the rebates and I think some variable frequency drives. And instead, what was taken out was in some of the elementary schools, some of the variable frequency drives didn't have the, as good a payback, they weren't as big. Also there, because we're doing relief fans at the field house at North, we did the field, we're doing relief fans there for the same reason. And then roof section of about 10,000 square feet wasn't significant need, so that got added to it. At, at Johnson Elementary, that's where we're replacing all the unit ventilators with vertical units, new controls, new boiler plant, upgrading the lights. We still have an option, chiller is still working, still functional, it's an option as to whether you want to replace it either now or down the road or if you want to use some of the $7.00 filters, it's an option for you, you can decide. At Emerson, the majority of that works, the roof work, and then the rest of the work at Emerson is like the remaining schools, which are fan powered relief, so we can have ventilation in your classrooms, lighting upgrades and improved communication so that Colin and Tiki can actually call in and have a view of what's going on in there. Some are new buildings, you can't see the actual access drive until Nord will know what's going on. I could try and point out with the timeline, but I think we'll give you a few bullet point highlights. Today's board review of the project final scope that we reviewed with your team. We will begin work onsite the day after school's ending, although we have begun work, we've ordered equipment for your approval last, in March 12th on a long lead tight on, we've done a number of items, and actually our control people have been line up for that. Summer work will be complete onsite with regards to any interference of any classroom or anything by the start of school. We'll still be working behind the scenes on boilers and some control work and we'll develop a punch list for September. You should expect to be complete by mid-November with us finding controls for first year. Those are pretty much the line, 3% of the last time I was here. And that's my presentation, I hope it was shorter than this week. Do you have any questions?
Okay, one, I think, just to understand the sheets that we're looking at here again, we talked earlier about, about a $3 million project sheet, that 3.9 million that is going to have a 1.5 reduction, but that 3.9 plus this 7.2 is the total 10 million that we, in effect, created by the working cash bonds. And then to understand your chart here, you know, we have this installed cost, the 7.2 as you refer to it as, next column is the estimated incentives, that's a reduction of rebate, if you might call it?
They will send you a check.
Okay, so in effect, our cost is 7.2 minus that 400,000.
Yes, and we won't know the final number until we submit and they give you the final, sometimes the adjustments.
Okay, and then the, the next column, which is a very important column in my mind, is that the energy savings cost that we will incur estimated annually is about $1,001.
That's energy and operational savings. So that has an energy component to it and then it has operational savings, which are savings from a maintenance cost for not having to repair equipment and then it's also life cycle costing. And the statute allows you to take, for instance, you have a boiler that is 15 years old and needs to be replaced, it costs $200,000. You're allowed to say, that's 200,000 in savings because I'm taking this money to install it, so I don't have to use my general fund or operating maintenance fund to pay for that, so it's a combination of those.
Okay, approximately how much is the annual reduction of that number, if you were to put it that way versus the...
Energy savings on this project is probably $75,000 in that range, somewhere around there. This project was focused, if you recall, on aged equipment, learning environment and then basically repairs and then some energy savings and rebates, so that's basically our priority on this one.
Okay, so therefore, the 1.1 is, is kind of saying that we're replacing stuff now that we would have had to replace.
You would have to replace, yes.
Okay, personally, operating every year.
Right, for instance, you have a 50-year-old air handler that's in your gym that's literally rusting out, so you're going to have to replace that.
I have just one question with respect to the Johnson project. I'm not clear on, or do I understand what the approach will be to the chiller? Is that still something that's in consideration or how will we know if you're going to decide to replace it?
It's, it's not, we decide. What happened is in the final meeting with the group, the roof at Wheaton Morneville South became a higher priority than the chiller did, so they're close to the pricing and that one moved ahead of that one, which moved the chiller down to keep it within the 7.2. You have monies, you have incentives you may want to use, you may want to, it's, adds its expected useful life, but in talking with your people, still working. It has obsolete refrigerants, so that's going to get a little more expensive, so it's, it's one of those, it's still functioning, it hasn't been causing a significant amount of problem up to this point, but you're replacing everything now. So that's why I wanted to show that, because at March 12th, it was, it was literally the last item, I think, that we had selected on that list at that time. The roof at Wheaton Morneville South leaked pretty significantly and damaged our flooring in there and so on, so we, that became a quick priority and we needed to find a spot where we could have time for it to melt, is that correct, Mr. Brownie?
Yes, the, that roof, the floor has been refinished and the roof...
Go ahead.
That roof did have a minor leak, last year we did refinish the floor, we cashed it, it was holding fine, but the winter that we had took quite a toll on it. And the roof at Wheaton Morneville South, the roof at Sandberg, the roof at Monroe are the next three on the priorities and the south one did rise to the top. You know, I'm talking to Colin and Tom and I should mention how it's who starts officially on July 1st, but I see them, I think, almost every day. You know, we, we, we really struggled with the chiller issue, it is still working, it has still got a little bit of life left in it, so it did fall out. I would, you know, granted, Steve would think we'd like to have done that as well, but I think that's something we can look for in the future to replace out.
I just have two things. One, when you talk about roof, is it a whole replacement or just repaired?
It's replacement roof. Yeah, it's, it's a replacement roof.
And I just feel so pleased on what you're doing and all the work you've done and I can remember when you were deciding whether to go with the former company and all that analysis and who to choose and, I mean, I think you've managed and exceeded expectations and it's concern and care to get the rebates and twists and change and, you know, really look at it daily. I think that breaks up.
Thank you very much. You're really a great team, highly educated team that makes it, I won't say easy work, but competitive work. But they're not, they challenge us, but I meant it's, it's logical, it makes sense for me to do this versus that, so it's, it's been a great team. Thank you.
What would the chiller cost be, you know, we took out of their own financial?
$260,000.
$260?
$260, and keep in mind that that's been sized for future, so that you can air condition the entire building. You have areas that still have DX individual chiller, so as those would fail, that's why it was sized a little bit bigger than here.
Well, I might not be highly educated, I am educated on this issue, so I have a lot of questions. First one's contract, second one's scope, and then the third one, which probably will be a little bit more difficult, is compensation within the 7.2 million dollars. First off, I think you guys have read the contract today. I assume this is the contract that we used previously in previous phases. I'm assuming we trust our legal counsels, good with that as is?
We did, we do have a new counsel looking at it, so we do have a separate set of eyes, a new set of eyes looking at it, so we are still, still working them over to some degree on trying to get through this contract, working with them for a short time, yes.
But our previous counsel answered your question, yes, reviewed the contract when we did the initial review. So hopefully approving this pending any final comments from our current attorney. Couple of questions on the scope, I see, you know, just looking at improvement, it looks like a lot of scope changed at Johnson, there's a bunch of things that weren't asked for and discounted options, is there some decision that was made to leave those off?
They were dollar decisions, the original Johnson had the classroom unit ventilator replacements, the boilers, if you look at the remaining ones on there, there, there are air handlers, there's a domestic hot water heater, the air handlers had some life left into them and when we were going to do the chiller, then it would have been, you could have taken those air handlers off their DX and made them chill water. Domestic hot water heater, Dale, that's a...
It's apparently new unit, but it's not as efficient as the new ones, you know, high efficiency bar here, so while we were in the room, we were going to replace it.
We thought we might get a good rebate like we did at the high school, but the size of the unit didn't generate the rebate that would have made it attractive. So that's really the majority of them.
I noticed there were a lot of variable frequency drives that were almost not to do across the program, is there, I mean, that was one of the things we talked about earlier on, was cold and snow.
Right, and, and what we did was, when we checked the rebates for those versus doing the variable frequency drives and the domestic water heater at Wheaton Morneville South, those were significantly higher, they were bigger, and so they gave us more rebate money, which made it a better payback. Secondly, at the elementary schools, when we got down to finally doing the detailed study, a lot of the controls at those elementary schools were so old that we were going to have to put new controllers on just to control the variable frequency drives, so it was going to be more costly than originally estimated because of that in order to be able to run the way we want to. So it makes more sense to do those when you're doing the full control replacement, there's the efficiency of scale for that. It doesn't really affect the learning environment, those were really more done for pure payback reasons and the paybacks just weren't there.
Okay. In terms of the roofing projects, I know Leggett has developed a design document, you guys bit of the, the construction cost for the roofing project isn't here, but I'm assuming the fees and the construction administration work is under the other sheet?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, so, but Leggett will be doing the construction administration underneath you or what is your project manager?
Our project manager, we're watching, we have them, they're going to be doing inspections on those as well. We have people that are doing, we really do the bidding portion, that way we could limit the contractor selection to just those people that your school wanted to go out and get bids on those.
Okay, and the last thing is, I wish we would have been having this conversation, looking at this apparent bid tab, you know, like in February, I kind of feel like I'm in a little bit of a box here, we've got to award this contract tonight, we have to start this project as we start our schedule, we've got about a month to get this, this going, but this is the first time we've been able to look at the details of the 7.2 million. And I did a lot of analysis of where the cost is and basically we had about $5.5 million of hard cost and the balance of that is your compensation and other minor general conditions. And, you know, recognizing that you don't have a design piece in here for the roofing project, I did some calculations and I'm a little bothered by the, kind of shocked actually, at the total level of compensation that's going to you understand as the designer, project manager, the energy engineering associated with it. I know how to analyze the numbers and I took the roofing projects off and I figured out about $4.3 million balance for the hard cost and I, and I looked at your design work and project management and it's not 11.6%, which is very reasonable. And then I include the overhead profit on that and I'm a little shocked. I mean, I, I think the number, I, as an architect who does this stuff, you know what I do and where I work, I have a hard time justifying my head 26% of that cost.
If, if I can...
Help me understand this.
Okay, well, because I've been through this with your administration two years ago, where we went through this versus the traditional unified bid approach and our company is a mechanical contractor that does the design, we also are the general contractor. So we have fees and we do open book pricing and show all those fees, all of them listed on there, that in a unified bid, if you had a general and then a mechanical, the general's going to mark up that mechanical, mechanical's going to be marking up all those subs, and so we take that out. A lot of other providers will just give it to a mechanical contractor and then the mechanical has all the subs underneath them and all the equipment, which they mark up. So we're removing a level of markup. I'm only making 10% overhead, 5% profit, the rest of those are general condition numbers, which fall well below the range of a mechanical contractor, if you were to look at means or any other, or even a general contractor in terms of where, what their general conditions are, what their overhead and profit, if you look at means, a mechanical contractor's overhead and profit is usually around something 7%. Ours is 10.5 and so we're really the general with all the other components to it. I just went through this with another school this morning, showing how this process and actually use your numbers was lower than going through a unified bid approach.
But we do have project management, which, what's in project management?
I have three project people working all the way through, and I have been working really through the bid process. So I have a number of man-hours, I don't even know, I don't have that in front of me. So I have project managers and field superintendents, and my mechanical, my sheet metal, and my generals don't have those people in this project. So we're doing it instead of a mechanical. And Brad, if you want, I'd love to sit down because you're so familiar with the unified bid approach, and this is entirely different. And I can show you real numbers, how this is actually a lower cost effective process for, especially for mechanical work that we're doing here, than a unified bid approach.
Yeah, because you're basically dividing design, construction management, and general conditions in one sum of money, which is twenty-six percent of the whole project in it. So...
I guess all I can say is, I have, what we do is we show you all our costs, and they are the costs.
Am I not seeing what we're doing wrong?
I don't know what you have. I've not seen what you have.
I just got it this morning.
Okay. Those are all our costs. And then I need ten percent for overhead, five percent for profit.
So you have your labor in that?
Do I have my labor?
And the ten percent?
Mine? Me personally?
No, I need personally, your company.
My company has, I need fifteen percent basically to do this work. And means, which is the...
You separately have your field superintendents and stuff and project manager.
I can break it out, yeah.
I'd like to see a breakdown.
Okay.
I'm uncomfortable approving it as is. We have to approve it, because we won't get the project done this summer. I have a hard time justifying to the rest of the board that I don't feel comfortable with, but we have to approve it, so.
When we, when we agreed, or whenever we had the conversation a year and a half, a couple of years ago, we knew, we knew exactly as a board and staff, what those costs were going to end up being. I remember, you know, the exact conversation. And there was a couple of things we're paying for. We're paying, you know, they're guaranteeing the project, it's a turnkey solution, all of those types of things, and I'm doing this off the top by head here. But the bottom line is, we're also getting to guarantee the energy savings as a part of that. And that was part of the cost that they're guaranteeing. That seventy, I think you said seventy-five thousand for, you know, that will impact our own end budget for many, many years. So that's part of the performance contracting arrangement that we've built in it. And so we, you know, and we can certainly sit down and go through all the details and walk through that. But I, and I remember the board members spent a lot of time talking about that. And Bill, if I'm missing something, feel free to jump in. You are correct. And one of the reasons why Performance Services was our vendor of choice is because they did show us all this. You're exactly correct. We are aware of exactly where the costs are and where the fees are sitting. Whereas some other vendors that we were considering did not show us that. And that was why we ended up where we ended up, to understand where the fees are and where the work is. So, am I missing something, Mr. Farley?
No, I think it's just fair to say, we had this exact conversation at the table. As part of the process, we had our architects involved as per code requires, and they had, you know, they were asking the same question we were, because it's definitely a different way of doing business as far as that goes. But there is, as Bob explained, there is not the overhead profit on all the subs and all the different layers. So, you know, that helped, helped us every time when we went through this to understand that. Because again, I was looking at the same percentages that Paulson is in, and scratching my head at it. But, you know, as we worked our way through it, it made sense.
And the other, you know, thing, you know, maybe to answer, two things to answer your concerns. One is, we can certainly sit down and talk through the, you know, so you have a better understanding of the detail behind this type of, you know, contract. The second thing is, you know, if, you know, if there is concern about, you know, the project moving forward on other, you know, projects, because we know we have a lot of them, you know, that would be right in behind, we can certainly revisit that as a board or individual and take a look at it, even through the facilities committee, and talk about what projects fit this type of scope of work and what might fit the traditional bid, speculative bid, etc. Which is what we've done, and we have broken some of these up between the two. If I can just add one other benefit that you mentioned, the guarantee energy efficiency, there's guaranteed no chain orders. The third one is, we are guaranteeing the learning environment in all those rooms where we're putting in a complete solution. So you're not just getting the equipment, you're getting your solstices equipment.
They're guaranteeing CO2 lighting levels.
Noise levels.
Noise, sure.
In selected rooms.
In rooms where we're working, not in the ones that we aren't.
That really impacts Sweden North at Johnson.
At this point in time.
Not all seven of these schools.
No, just... Right, because some of those were...
Well, like I said, I'm still struggling with it. We have to approve this, and I wanted this order, I've got it this morning. Is there a way to end the motion to approve this with the add that if we find cost savings and we could come back with an deducting chain order within one month?
Due to, I'll come, you know, I would not recommend that at this time. This project has been vetted for several months. We have spent time in facilities committee looking at it. We have, we have talked about this. I would, you know, recommend if you don't do that. I recognize your concerns. I'm certainly more than happy to take a look, you know, a look at this as we move forward in the future. This project is, you know, the scope of it, and the staff have worked, you know, numerous hours on it, as well as Performance Services. I would recommend that we move forward, certainly, you know, to wishes of the board, and I understand the concerns. And, but, you know, this isn't the first time we've seen this, and, you know, these projects as they could...
First of all, thank you for the expertise that you bring to the board, and I have no idea what you're talking about. I was fascinated looking at, she's got diagrams and such here, so that was fascinating. But I guess my overall philosophical stance on this is twofold. One, process oriented. I mean, we have, as has been said many times here, we've had this in committee in terms of looking at this way of doing things versus another way of doing things. Mr. Cambiani and Mrs. Cackill have both looked at it, and I believe, and I don't know if there was a report ever involved, but Mr. Roman nowadays. So that's all been looked at. But the bigger picture for me, after being on this board for fifteen years now, is if there's one thing I think of with Mr. Farley, it's the phrase, every penny is a prisoner. And I guess I have a hard time believing that he would raise forward something that is significantly out of line, knowing how he, you know, talks about other things. So my confidence, although I don't have the technical expertise of you, my confidence is that Mr. Farley and his staff have really thought through the implications of this. And so for that reason, I wouldn't be anxious to support him in the end to this. I think it's going the wrong direction.
I share the same confidence in Mr. Farley. I'm not disputing the fact that we have been talking about this. I've been to all those meetings, and I understand that. I haven't seen this level of detail for a couple of months. I've seen it for a couple of hours. So I support the project. I support the approach. I would just like the opportunity to spend more time digging into the details and seeing if there's a way, just give me a better understanding so that I can be more confident and convey that confidence to the rest of the board, to the rest of the community. Because I feel like I have some highly educated experience to go look at this, and I'd like the opportunity to convey that to the rest of you.
Two years ago, I was on the facilities committee, you know, where we interviewed three different proposals, or three different contractors for performance contracts, Performance Services was one of them. And when we boiled it down to interviewing or second round of Performance Services, we had Paul and Pat from Leggett Architects participate. And during that presentation, they raised the same questions you did. And I've been asked it a long time, and I learned a lot more about this performance contract than I ever thought I would. I welcome the reviewers, and it's something I think we ought to review annually. Those questions have been asked, and they are rightfully asked. I ask in comfort that Performance Contract, Performance Services, we've been with Leggett this issue on several of these projects. And yes, we are on a time crunch, I think we need to do that.
I'd say this doesn't warm my heart, I'll tell you. You know, I just, I don't like the dilemma that speaks the most. I think that, you know, again, thinking back in my fundamental, what our role is, and our role is a little more planned, and, you know, we're not involved day to day. My reaction is that we've had this looked at, we're here today where we are. And I think maybe the issue here is that we need to make sure we get certain key data earlier in the process. And that, you know, at this point, I think, you know, I'm assuming that we've had the overview that's been done here, you know, and I wish we had more time. Not that that definitely causes me to feel like we should stop the process or go forward on the process, because if I felt uncomfortable, I could not go for it. And, but again, on the other hand, you know, we've had our staff look at this. And, you know, other board members obviously have a pass to the same issue. So I'm having a little problem making the decision today. And I think that, you know, the lesson we learned here is, you know, can we deal with, you know, these big box card numbers in the future earlier in the process, or incorporate those board members that have expertise in the process a little earlier. You know, I don't, you know, I don't know what you just said, you know. And I'm certain, you know, I understand percentages of overhead and profit, so on, very clear. And, you know, that troubles me a bit, but, you know, and I don't want to get into the details of all that. But I'm looking at your expertise, and that I value very much, and, you know, that troubles me. And, you know, so, you know, but on the other hand, I think, again, we are a planning overview function. The staff has done these background tests and so on. So I think at this point, I could not object to the vote on yes on this, but, you know, I think it's, again, you know, we just have to be aware of how we will forward in the future on these type of events.
All right, Mrs. Sandberg, will you please comment on?
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Gavianni?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Interhart?
Yes.
Both of you, yes.
Next item on our action item, approval of a lease for the transition program. May I have a motion in a second, please, to approve the lease for the transition program.
So, with Mr. Swanson?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cackill. Is there any discussion?
Just to have a brief staff comment on this. This particular situation is an opportunity to provide a better learning environment for our students in the transition program. We have looked at multiple locations in our community, and we feel like, I believe, that this location is the most appropriate. I'm going to have Jerome Monopolus just briefly give an update from her department's perspective.
Sure. So our transition program currently is housed at Hubble, and we know that that's not suitable location for them. It recently is a offender for the last three years because of the budget crunch a couple of years ago. And so since then, it's always just been one of those, we've seen more staff and parents and even community has asked us that we've, you know, looked at the location. Sue Waters and Adam Ferguson have really done a really nice job of taking a look at what opportunities are out there in the community. And really, we've looked at our budget and allocated funds so that we can make sure that we can support this location change for our students. It will also give them maximum opportunities to access public transportation, those vocational options, which they're already, you know, accessing right now, but it's just a little more difficult because they are on, you know, their open or half cost routes, which they can just jump on. We're providing more of that transportation, so our cost should even decrease a little bit, especially with the manpower we're putting into the program.
Thank you, Mrs. Sandberg.
Any other questions?
Just a quick question. I would like to ask where this is for the, maybe I didn't catch it, but I don't think I saw it.
Yeah, it's at 100 Ridge Street, so right actually, East of here and down there.
It's near the company. Right, by the way, you can hire, or please, partner.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't...
And it's a portion of the building that is, it's flat, it also has one level, which is a whole other, very, very important item here for these students. And we vetted out and believe that it is a very good location for this program.
Will you leasing the whole building, or just a portion of it?
Just a portion of, just, just a portion of it for this program at this time. As I indicated in these conversations, there is another portion of the building that we are considering, but not leasing it at this time. We may have some other uses for the rest of that facility.
Does any work have to get done, and that needs space to accommodate this program?
There will be some modifications, not a lot of them. That was another appealing piece to this location, that it will be able to move things in pretty easily. A lot of equipment will be transferred from Hubble. We also are anticipating a lot of other community organizations to help, Orsted and some of the other organizations, and also some parent donations and so on, to furnish it, because it'll be a living setting for this program. Anything else on that?
No, you're exactly right. Right now, the staff have really reached out to the community, and Home Deco, Lowe's, Portillo, Staples have all been establishments that have been communicated with from our staff and asked and work with them, and give donations. Staff have also put together on our website for GoFundMe, in which parents have all already been donating. If this is going to be something that we potentially can do, that they will continue to donate. So there's listed items on that website, and you can donate money, or even the appliances, for example, that they're in search of. And like Dr. Hurst said, that we will be pulling some of the materials that we do have from transition program already, because those already exist, such as work for joy and things of that nature.
Our parents' students will be thrilled with this transition.
Is it right that it's, the lease is paid for with money paid?
That is correct, or money paid, honestly.
I was just curious about square footage, how much space would you, was that in the document too, I'm just saying?
It is about twenty-five hundred square feet, if I'm looking at. And it would be out by July 1. And prior to that, I'll work with them from their end, and then we'll also be working with, and our staff to get them to get a small amount of patients done.
And this also gives us compliance, right, with the law?
That is correct. And we've been noted that we have not, and I've actually personally had conversations with a few parents on this topic. And they've been patient, and we believe we found a location that is appropriate.
Thank you. I'm very, very pleased that we found this spot. I think the location is excellent in terms of walking distance to downtown Wheaton, and the setting will be really good for our students in that age group, so that they can develop some life skills. And I think it's, they're probably not really happy to be in a school with all those little kids, you know, when they're going to get reefer. So I'm pleased that, thank you for doing all the research, and finding a suitable location for that. It's very welcome change, and I know a lot of the people who go to my attention will be very happy. So, any other questions or comments? With Mrs. Sandberg, will you comment, please?
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Gavianni?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
I have to abstain on this. I've worked with this company for past, you know, a while.
Mrs. Interhart?
Yes, the motion passes. The next item is approval of banking institution due to the request for a proposal. May I have a motion to approve the banking institution?
Some more.
With Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roman. Staff comments?
Briefly. The finance committee met a little over a week ago and reviewed this RFP. This was something that we felt was overdue, to take a look at our banking services. The report is reflective of that, unless Mr. Madison, Mrs. Swanson, anything comments. One thing to note is that our recommendation is to move all of our banking services to Wheaton Bank and Trust, which I know our staff will be very excited about that, to consolidate services and also provide a little blank here with our... consolidate services and also provide a little blank here with our businesses. So unless you give a comments from the committee, that summarizes pretty well.
Questions from board members? Okay, then, Ms. Senator, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Gavianni?
Yes.
Mrs. Kakhiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
I am on the board of this bank, and therefore can add hold on a group's name.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes.
Motion passes. Approval of a resolution designating depositors, may I have a motion to adopt a resolution designating depositors?
So moved.
Move by Mrs. Swanson?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson, is there any discussion? And then let's take a vote. Ms. Senator, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
I abstain again, abstaining.
Mr. Gavianni?
Yes.
Mrs. Kakhiel?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes, motion passes.
Next item?
The next item on our agenda is approval of a long-term extended learning opportunities intergovernmental agreement. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Move by Mr. Roman, seconded by Mrs. Kakhiel. Is there any discussion, any information from staff?
Yes, just a brief update on this. As the board is aware, we worked hard to put together our long-term agreement here on this IGA. I can tell you, working with three districts, it's a two district, it is a new opportunity for us, and working through some of the details here has not been easy, because we all are passionate about our work in each of our districts. I'm going to turn over to Mrs. Docwiss, and let her just give a brief, you know, summary of that work, and what this agreement means for it.
It may seem like a long time that we've been waiting for this, and we talked about it at length in January and February, about hammering out a lot of the details, as did districts 203 and 204, making sure that we were on the right track before we took it to all of the attorneys and wrote out the formal agreement. That has taken longer than expected, and that's why we've had that couple of months of this delay. If you recall, that the main purpose of putting all of these districts together was really to provide expanded learning opportunities and expanding learning opportunities, not only for online, but blended learning. And as you know, next year is just at the online stage, but again, just another four and a half hour meeting this morning, we are continuing to plan on that blended learning and work book, right? Some of the highlights from the group that are here, the hiring of the director, we have gone ahead and posted that position, and will be interviewed for that soon, and also raised by technical support specialists. Some other of the secretary positions, but also a lot of technology skills to be able to support the different teachers from the different districts that will be working on this. I did want to highlight, and it did get kind of confusing, about short-term, long-term, what all does that mean, because we've had both of those things on the agenda for tonight. And we only had to go into a short-term IGA because it took so long to get the long-term written. So while we've been working with our consultants on this, we needed to have a short-term in our government agreement, but there was some disagreement even on that, so it's very odd that it's coming through at both at the same time. The short-term would be effective only until June 30th, and then the long-term goes into next year as well. When we talked earlier this winter, and we used the initial buy-up cost of that 85,000, I did want to know that we've spent less than 15,000 on this project so far, so that was not a reaccumulating like 85 then and 85 now, we're still talking about the same 85,000. But it's going into next year and all of next year as well. So I will entertain any questions that you might have, but that's the general overview.
I'm going to ask one. The, again, the 85, that was the part of the response you said, so that was what we approved previously, and then there's an operating cost item in here that we anticipate matched with the upcoming year. Can that, can you refresh my name?
Sure. So there's the initial cost of the 85,000 that we will be paying yet to come, but that's for all of next year, and that's really equally, each district that is buying in and is a founder and has a vote on this board is paying for that. And then there are additional costs that are really going to be more by proportional size. For example, District 204 is twice the size, almost where we are. And some of the fees that are going into that are the continuation of the consulting, but I do know, as of this morning, that those costs are going to be much reduced than what is in this agreement. We figured that would be okay with every board, as long as we weren't going to profit. And then we are working on this learning management system, of what that would look like as well. Some of those costs will be ongoing, but some of them will be dramatically reduced. We will not be working with consultants much longer, so that would continue to be part of that yearly cost. But as we add more classes, which I think we will, there could be an increased cost in the curriculum content that we buy, or additional professional development for teachers.
So this is consistent with what we have approved previously? And then, I guess the other thing I heard when you were just explaining, is that there was some delay in getting this accomplished? I mean, is that a working pattern? I mean, you know, we're the little guy here, apparently, I mean, we getting booked deep up, or is this a, you know, I don't want to see a trend of this happening, is my point. I guess, you know, there's, because again, you know, the number of districts dropped out, maybe it felt like a little guy, whatever.
The, now, of course, I want to begin with that. We, as you start with different districts working on a variety of things, and then going to each of the attorneys to go back and look at things, and then giving comments from, I love those superintendents that they was, but other various administrators that need to play in on this. It has taken longer to get all of the parties to agree to some of this language in the IGA. I don't see that being a trend or a work pattern. We're meeting again next week, even an evening to get things, so by next October, we'll already have course registration, things ready to go for next year. It's just taking a lot of time to get the initial agreement on how all this will work forward. I do think that a lot of the language here will help us operate more quickly, because we try to cover questions that maybe we'll encounter, whether we stay the same or whether we grow dramatically. So I don't think this will be a trend.
Also, what I would be right for then is going to take over a lot of this operational work that will sit with staff in each of the, at each of the districts.
I know there was a discussion about if students were using this capability or opportunity, rather, and maybe they had a full day in the classroom, and then something happened with the fact, and that might be a fee, was that, is that landing on something that we landed there, or?
For next school year, we are not charging an additional fee or allowing that. That isn't something that we are hammering out for the year after that, but that is not part of the process for current registration for classes for next student.
Are there any other questions or comments? Would you call this call?
Okay, in reviewing this IGA, it appeared to be taken from a template, are there other school districts, either the state or the country, that are coordinating and collaborating on virtual learning, blended learning like this?
Yes, and Evergreen, the company that we've been working with, works with a variety of those. We've been learning from some of them. There's one in Wisconsin, and there's been an operation for quite some time, and it's really robust, it's 16 districts. So some of the information that we've seen, we've been on comments, calls to them, using some of that template. There's also a group in Denver that is working with the same consultant, but they're further along in process. So you are correct when we're using some of their templates and learning from their experiences.
Are there no further questions or comments? Ms. Senator, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kakhiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Gavianni?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes. Yes, motion approved. Our next item of business is adoption of a resolution for reduction in forced dismissal and termination of classified staff. May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Move by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roman, is there any discussion? Ms. Senator, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Gavianni?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kakhiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes, motion approved. Our next item of business is approval to uphold the expulsion of student E 2013-14-02. The expulsion will be held in abeyance, well, I'm sorry, this, the motion is to uphold the expulsion of student E 2013-14-02 effective May 15, 2014, through the end of the 2014-15 school year. The expulsion will be held in abeyance in lieu of placement and completion in an alternative educational setting for the stated duration. If said student has not successfully completed the alternative educational program, the expulsion will be immediately enacted for the remainder of the expulsion term without further action by the school board. Is there any information from staff or further discussion or comments? May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Move by Mr. Roman?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Matheson, Ms. Senator, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kakhiel?
Yes.
Mr. Gavianni?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes. Motion approved. Next, we have written reports, I'm sorry, I turned my mic off, but I need to be turning it up. Monthly financial reports, and our Freedom of Information Act report. Are there any questions that board members may have on these written reports? Reports from board members, are there any board committee reports? We did hear a little bit from finance, do you have anything else to add?
Well, there were a couple of the things we took the action on tonight. And we did talk about, in our June finance committee meeting, giving a preview of the budget, so that sort of goes to Mr. Matheson's concept of, you know, taking a look at numbers maybe ahead of time, and stuff, so we will be doing that. And we did talk about some possible future topics for the finance committee to look at, one of them being something along the lines of director of development, that sort of thing, just by committee members, and, you know, consisting of some voluntary meditation. Certainly waiting until we hear from our community for discussion.
We also had a discussion around the collection process. I don't know if you wanted to comment, or I will. Okay, or Mr. I may defer here. We have had a discussion with the finance committee about the student fees that we have outstanding, and it's a pretty significant amount. What's the number, Mr. Farley, it came from a rough thought in my head? Is it, it's $400,000? Is that, okay, I don't want to speak, okay, $400,000, pretty significant amount of unpaid fees. Mr. Farley and Mrs. Iver have investigated a vendor that would pursue that business. They are an educational vendor, not the classy collection agency type of scenario, and it was the interest of the committee that we would pursue that and engage the services for that to help us with those collections. As you know, revenue is important to us, and that's a pretty significant amount of money that we're pursuing. Unless you have anything else on that topic.
Well, just for context, of board members who are maybe a little bit newer, we actually sort of did have this discussion several years ago, maybe around the 2007, 2008 time period, and just briefly, and at that point, felt like the economy was too difficult to be going down that path. But since then, you know, things have taken a little bit, turned a little better, our resources have taken a turn for the tighter, perhaps, and, and so the need to kind of write that, but all assurances that this company is sensitive to families who have situations in that, and before even, you know, those things went forward, our administrators would be filtering out that we're not appropriate to send through that sort of process, so that was part of our discussion.
I want to follow up on that, these, the $400,000 that's outstanding, it's already been reduced for any appropriate fee reductions, that would be free and reduce lodge type students, I'll call it. And, you know, I feel very strongly that everyone pay their appropriate share, and, you know, there's, you know, really no reason we would not proceed in this activity.
Okay, are there any other board committee reports?
I have a couple, I don't know if the board committee, but they, you know, basically, Johnson School this week has a, Friday has an event, we'll talk about that in a minute, or you want that one, okay. Okay, I'm intending to do the course report. And, you know, it's, I think all day long, I did fast over a question, whether enough, get an hour or two to spend, one would be the time to go over, and there's a suggestion between, I think, 10:30 and 11:00, or for lunch from 11:30 to 12:30, or something like that. So it'd be great if we could all, significant numbers to attend. And then the other thing I want to mention too, we touched on it a little bit, I meant to mention it earlier on the, when we were talking about the insurance proposal, that we were using a local vendor that was weighing their fees, and I'm a big proponent of buying locally. We've got some flooring contracts locally, we hired some banks locally, et cetera, and I hope that will continue that there. For those of you who go to International Fairytale Johnson School, be sure to visit the Brazil of the Mamba on the transcription of this podcast.
Do they mumble like every hour on the hour, or is there a set time, they have a set mumble? Okay. You know, if we do the latest of the hour, I'm going to try to get to all of you, I know Mrs. Swanson and I each attended several sessions at the National School Association Conference, and we like to talk about them, but I'm going to send you a written report instead, because it's a lot of wonderful ideas, a lot of work for us to consider, but I'll get off, then I'll do the writing, and we can maybe have a discussion in later time.
And mine will be written and illustrated.
I can see that this Swanson's report will run better than I can, absolutely. You know, I have more flowery language, and I'll read it to you, so. All right, any other reports? Okay, so our future discussion topics will obviously be the budget and the 2014-15 superintendent goals. On May 28th, we will need to have a regular board meeting, so the committee of the whole meeting will be a regular business meeting. That's May 28, 2014, 7:30 at the SST. And then our next schedule, scheduled regular meeting is June 11, 2014, at 7:30 at the SST. That's when we start our summer schedule, where we only have one meeting a month. Other any public comments on that agenda item? There are none? Okay. We have need for closed session tonight, and the closed session items that we will be discussing and are listed for possible action are collective negotiating matters, purchase or lease of real property for use of a district, and personnel items. No action is respected following a closed session, so may I have a motion to adjourn the closed session?
So moved.
Move by Mr. Gavianni?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roman, Ms. Senator, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Gavianni?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kakhiel?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.